Do you know I still have to go to Carla?
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting to order. This is the School District of Waukesha Regular Board Meeting for Wednesday, May 11th. Let's please stand for the Pledge Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Sue, would you please take the roll call?
Mark Borowski.
Here.
Cory Montiel. Carrie Kozlowski.
Here.
Markell Moore.
Here.
Joseph Como.
Here.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Here.
Anthony Zenobia.
Here.
Karen Reinacek.
Here.
Kelly Piasak.
Here.
And Mr. Montiel is excused tonight. Sue, can you please verify that the meeting's been properly posted?
Yes, it has.
Thank you. Tonight, we do have bright lights, so I'm pleased to welcome the staff from Summit View Elementary School to speak about arts integration. Welcome.
Thank you so much. Thanks for having us tonight. We are very excited to be able to share with you what makes the View so special at Summit View Elementary. For those of you who haven't been out to Summit View, we extend the invitation to all of you to come see what we present tonight live in person. You do have a one-pager on our school and what we will present to you. We are an arts-integrated magnet school in the school district of Waukesha. So, we still follow the school district's curriculum. We still follow standards, but our teachers approach it through the lens of the arts. Thank you. So, tonight, we're going to be sharing a bit about what that process looks like, how our great team of teaching staff creatively plans for that. But I thought we'd start off here with... Bring this up here. Let's try it again. We'll do it this way. All right. Our vision statement. So, a few years ago, our staff came together to rewrite a vision statement for our school that more accurately represented what we are hoping for, for all of our students and our families at Summit View. And you can see that on your one-pager. It's to engage students in an education through the arts that grows a confidence in their unique abilities. Measuring creativity is a very difficult thing to do, but what we do see in our students is an increase in their confidence, which in turn will provide our community of learners access to develop key skills in critical thinking, creativity, and collaboration. I'm going to pass the mic off to our arts integration specialist and special education teacher, Ms. Teal Petersonberg.
Hello. It's nice to see everyone. We really look to the Kennedy Center to give us a foundation of what arts integration is and how it can best promote student learning across all content areas. So, we often return to the arts integration definition from the Kennedy Center, which is on the screen now. It says, "An arts integration is an approach to teaching in which students construct and demonstrate understanding through an art form. Students engage in a creative process which connects an art form and another subject area and meets evolving objectives in both." Now, just to touch on the evolving objectives, it's very important, of course, that in a grade-level classroom, we are doing appropriate activities and have appropriate standards that we are meeting for that specific age level of students. So, just like we're wanting to see students grow from kindergarten all the way through fifth grade in the elementary setting in certain content areas, we're wanting to see the ways that the arts and those other content areas work together to enhance and grow their skills in both areas throughout their time at Summit View.
So, the true magic of arts integration falls within the collaboration. So, next, we'll hear from Mrs. Warner, one of our music educators at Summit View, and then also Mrs. Gill, who teaches first grade.
Hi. So, I'm Lindy Gill, as Garrett had said, and I teach first grade. And when I started looking at the science unit for sound and light, I started looking at all the standards and what the students needed to accomplish and get out of the unit to understand it. And I thought, obviously, there was a natural connection with music and sound. And so, naturally, then I reached out to Leah, Mrs. Warner, and I asked if we could collaborate on some of the... what I needed to accomplish and teach the kids on sound and what, if there was standards, that we could mesh together.
So, one really successful way to implement an integrated arts project is through a three-lesson sequence. So, the first step is for the content teacher to teach a lesson directed at one of their standards. So, for us, that was Lindy teaching the first graders about sound waves and vibrations and how they reach our ears and how our ears receive them. Step two is for the arts teacher to teach a lesson that focuses just on their standard. So, that was me teaching the first graders music vocabulary words like pitch and melody and practicing listening for high and low pitches. The third step, then, is to plan a lesson that brings both of those standards together. And so, that's what Lindy and I figured out during our IACT planning time. When we were ready to implement step three, the integrated lesson, she brought the first graders to the music room for science class. And the first thing we did was look at how the waveforms look different for high, medium, and low sounds. And so, they figured that out first. And then, we set up stations around the music room, five different stations of instruments with a variety of materials and sizes. And the kids got to travel around to every single station and explore the instruments. And as they did that, they kept data on their iPad. They drew the correct wave form next to each picture of an instrument to represent what they heard when they played that instrument. As they went around, they were very excited to play the instruments like in a more free and exploratory way, as opposed to the very structured playing a song in music class. And they definitely engaged in conversations with each other about what they were hearing. So, it makes for a very authentic learning experience.
So, at the end of the lesson, the science lesson in Leah's room, Leah and I brought the kids back together and talked about each station of each instrument at each station and which instrument they thought matched the sound waves and what ones surprised them or what they thought was different or fun. And then, back in the classroom, after we continued through the rest of our sound lessons, at the end of the sound portion of the unit, one of their assessments was writing what they've learned about sound. And almost all of the students, in their reflection, spoke parts about the music collaboration and what they learned in the music room about sound waves and what they learned about pitch and how instruments and sound waves match each other. So, the reflection and the analysis of what they learned was much more in-depth than had I just asked them to write what they learned about sound. The music really allowed them to dig deeper and explain more with examples.
Hi. I'm Betsy Tealitz, and I am a fourth-grade teacher at Summit View. And I'm going to tell you about a writing project that we did as an integrated art piece. So, mine is a little bit different. I collaborated in years past with art teachers in order to complete this project with my students. So, I didn't need to do that again this year because I've already done that. So, I was able to teach both the writing standards and the art standards within my own classroom. They can be reinforced within the art classroom, but it's kind of nice that I won't need to do that collaboration year after year after year, once I kind of have the ability to teach the art myself. So, what I did teach the children was we were going from personal narratives into cool comics. So, think graphic novel. So, we started with the writing process and kind of brainstormed our personal narratives. And then, they actually wrote the prose version of it and learned how to code it in order to transfer it into Storyboard, which is the bridge between prose and the comics. And then, after using lots of different art apps and techniques and learning from a bunch of visuals and trying things out on their own, and they taught me a lot about different art apps as well, and then completing their projects and then being able to reflect on it, about parts that went really well, what they learned about themselves as artists and as writers. And then, a final product looked like this. So, they put all sorts of different graphics in there. This was one of the funnier ones that I really enjoyed. But one of the best parts of this project is that it is based on universal design for learning, where every child had an access point. Some of my lowest readers and writers really enjoyed this project and were really highly motivated and engaged because they were talented artists. And you don't have to have a lot of awards to still tell a story. So, this was probably my most favorite project that we did this year, and I love that it was at our art-integrated school.
All right. So, in order to hold accountability for our vision that we started off with, we are making sure that we have an arts-integrated opportunity for every one of our students within the units that were presented throughout the grade level. So, what you see here is just a snapshot of the math scope and sequence that is common across all elementary schools. At Summit View, we've started to embed the arts-integrated experiences, two of which that you heard tonight, right in there. So, our students can experience those year after year. And we have that same for literacy as well. And Ms. Petersonberg leads that work in the summer as well, doing arts-integrated lesson curriculum writing, along with what we do during the school year. So, we started off inviting you into the View to come see it live, and I extend that offer again. It's truly a beautiful place. We have a great staff and great community, and we'd love to have you there. So, thank you. Questions? Do we stay for that? Yes?
Please do. Any questions for the team? I apologize for my voice. I would start. I mean, for me, it's super exciting to see the science and the art come together. And I think so many people don't realize that things that are audible and visual and tactile have so much math and science behind them. And I love how you integrate the lessons. I'm curious, because sometimes it's great when the kids don't know that they're learning math and science. Do they know? Do you kind of put it in context, or do we try to slip it in sometimes?
I think both. When the students came to the music room, Leah said, "Welcome to science class." And then, of course, you know, they were all laughing and talking about, "Science! What is science?" So, sometimes then Leah kind of went into, "Well, in science, what are you learning about?" And we kind of talked about it that way. Also, during the collaborating peak time when Leah and I were meeting, my class was being covered by one of the other specialists, either FIAD or art. So, they got an extra art lesson or FIAD lesson. And so, I was telling them that I'm working on a creative science lesson with Ms. Warner because she is the expert in sound, and we're going to do something really exciting. So, I kind of tell them that it's a collaborative piece with that specific, but in some of the other activities, they don't always know. Like in what Betsy was saying, they may not realize that it is so integrated. And that is one thing that, being at the Kennedy Center a while ago, that they've always said is, "A lot of the integrated arts is what you already do. It's just finding that standard of the art and adding it to the kind of the grading or the process or explaining to the kids. You're learning art at the same time that you're learning math or science or all of that."
Thank you. So, do you feel, as educators in Summit View, that you need more time to collaborate and to come up with these things together than someone in a traditional school? And if you do, how do you find that time?
We are just so fortunate to have the IACT time built into our schedule. So, we have that opportunity for teachers to sign up and meet with the art, music, or FIAD teachers when they need to, when they have an idea or a unit coming up that they're like stuck with. They can sign up for that time right during the day. Someone else covers their class. And that is what makes this work. Having that time just built in, like, otherwise, it would be very overwhelming to have to do it outside of the school day. So, that's where the magic happens.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Moore.
Thank you. I am just... Excuse me. I'm super excited about the work that you all do at Summit View. It's so amazing. I just want to know if you all could share a story on how a student has grown from... I know you teach first grade to even, you know, you had them in first grade to now they're in fourth grade and, you know, the growth that they've made because of the integrated arts.
One thing I can speak to is it gives kids so much choice and freedom that as they get a little bit older, if you give them an assignment that doesn't have choice or freedom, they're like, "But don't we get a choice? Don't we get to pick?" So, I think that just shows that they have learned how to be creative, and they have really bought into that process and that they enjoy it and they want it.
And I can speak to that as well. My own son is actually a fourth grader, not in my classroom, but in one of the others. And he has special needs. And so, it was really nice for me to see that he is able to participate in all of the activities that all the other kids are doing. In fact, he is a struggling writer, and so, this has also been a favorite activity of his that he's coming home. And it's being implemented slightly differently than how I'm implementing it, but it's still accessible to him. And he comes home and he's like, "Mom, you have to see this super cool project that I'm doing. I'm actually writing." And he thinks it's amazing. And I'm just so happy to see that, like, a part of his day that he's struggled with in the past is something that has now become his favorite.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Well, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to our recognition for this evening, I will turn it over to our Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, Sharon Thede, to present the Employee Recognition Award. Come on in.
Okay. So, the Employee Recognition Award for May of 2022 is being presented this evening to Chris Dedenko. So, Chris, please stand up. So, Chris started in the School District of Waukesha in 2020 and is currently a custodian at West High School, hence the big crew we have behind us here. So, Chris's nominators begin by saying that he has been a breath of fresh air to the West High School building. He is kind, hardworking, and is always willing to do whatever is needed, and he's happy to do it. Chris's attitude about work aligns with his philosophy in life, and he simply wants the spaces and places at West to be organized and clean. We are grateful to have Chris in the building at West, and his going above and beyond is simply who he is, and it's no big deal to him, but it's immeasurable for staff. He is kind, thoughtful, and simply a great human being. Here are some comments from the West staff. So, a lot of West staff put in some great comments, so we just selected a few here. "So, the first day I walked into the building this year, I emailed the principal's secretary about how it was the best the school had looked in my years of working here. I was introduced to Chris shortly after, and he has exceeded every expectation I thought I ever had for a custodian. He went so far as to take apart my table from my classroom and took it home and welded it together for me. I'm not sure how he has time to do this and his regular task and handle all the daily interruptions from teachers. In addition, it seems the entire custodial staff is attacking their job with a very positive attitude this year." Another member said, "Chris is a salt-of-the-earth kind of guy. He not only does his job well, but he has gone out of his way to connect with staff and students. He has served as a mentor for some students with special needs, giving them jobs around the schools, and these students now beam with pride. Anytime we need something for the Wolverine wardrobe, Chris always responds. We are so glad you are a Wolverine." So, on behalf of the School District of Waukesha, I would like to congratulate Chris Dedenko on being selected to receive the School District of Waukesha Employment Recognition Award.
Can y'all hear me? I just want to say thanks to staff for giving this. You know, I appreciate it. We have an awesome custodial team. I want to thank the service building. When they come up, you know, they're spot on. And that's all I can really say. I'll probably do 110%, you know. That's all I did. So, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you all for being here. Congratulations. All right. Next, we are pleased to welcome and recognize the South High School Cheer Team, who recently won their third consecutive state championship. Welcome to members of the team and their coaches, Sarah Dude and Marissa Hernandez. Welcome.
Let's help them all get in here first before I start. Hi, everyone. I am Sarah Dude. I am a school counselor at Waukesha South. And most recent last two years, been the cheer and dance coordinator at South. The nine years prior to that, I was one of the cheer coaches. Just a little bit of our cheer program. I'm going to give you some quick stats and then just talk a little about the team. Starting in 2016, we started being pretty competitive. We always tried to be competitive before that, but successfully competitive in 2016. We finished top three. In '17, we were a state runner-up. '18, state runner-up. '19, top three. And then, 2020, had our first-ever state championship in co-ed. It's amazing. And then, followed up by 2021 and this year as well, winning state again in the co-ed division. Some perspective about why that's so amazing. When we first started being competitive, we competed with six varsity athletes. So, when we first got on the mat that first year, '16, there were six of them. And now, we've had as many as 24 on the varsity team, while also having a competitive JV program as well. So, the growth of the numbers have been incredible, which I attest to the amazing athletes and them recruiting their friends. Prior to that time, our goal really was to try to make it to state, which wasn't always the goal that we were even worried about because we weren't quite at that level. So, going from not necessarily qualifying to now being three-time state champs is incredible. In recent years, the cheer program has had as many as 65 athletes involved. It's fluctuated a little bit with the COVID stuff, but just really had built the program, and again, a testament to them and their hard work. Our JV program numbers also have taken off, and they actually won the JV state championship this year for the first time ever as well. More importantly, these student athletes have done an incredible job. The season is really long. We are about an 11-month season. So, they're about to try out again, and they just literally finished. It's incredible. Over the past 11 years I've been involved with it, the GPA growth has been unbelievable and their hard work and effort. So, right before we go to state, it's a really stressful time. It's like final exam time. It's about to be state cheer, and then we do a grade check. And we're like, "Okay, let's pray that this work has been going okay." The emphasis on academics had been really taken too. And this year alone, we had over 20 cheerleaders have a 3.5 GPA or higher, with many of them being above a 4.0. And that growth from being one of the lower-ranked teams as far as GPA 11 years ago till now, again, a testament to their hard work and effort and being incredible student athletes, which really is our focus as well. I could not be more proud of them. I went to a fundraiser recently for South. I had a parent who I did not know try to find the cheer coach, and he found me and said, "It has been unbelievable to watch your team get onto the floor, whether it's at basketball games, whether it's competitions, whatever it might be. Their athletic ability is incredible. The fact they're tumbling on hard floors or throwing a towel up in the air and things like that. They are always working hard, whether it's at practice, whether it's at games, cheering on other teams. They're unbelievable." So, I could not be more proud of these young ladies and men for the time and energy that they put in to be successful. They have truly developed a family, and they do want to say a few words to a couple of them. And just a huge congratulations to the back-to-back...
To back.
...state champs.
Hi, everyone. My name is Lexi, and I'm a senior at Waukesha South. So, I've had the honor of being on the varsity cheer team for the past three years, and it's been a great experience for me. I've been on a few sport teams since I was little, and the cheer team has just been so much welcoming to me, and I really appreciate it. Since I got on the team, it has felt like a second family to me, and I feel like that has also contributed to our success as a team because it's a different feeling when you're competing with your family than just teammates because it means so much more to us. Unfortunately, I'm graduating this year, and will have to leave the team, but I hope that they'll be able to keep the same loving and safe environment that they had while I was there.
All right. Hello, everybody. My name is Jaden, and I'm a junior this year. And this is going to be my fourth year on varsity cheer next year. So, joining a team forces you to work with others, but it's up to the team to make it more. I have never had a season of cheer where the team didn't feel like my family. Not a single tumbling pass or stunt goes up without us all cheering that person or group on, and that's truly why I believe we're so successful. Don't get me wrong. We have a lot of talent on our team, but it's the love that we have for each other that takes it to the next level. I've made some of my best friends on this team because of how often we see each other. No joke. Sometimes, I see my team more than my family. Having that outlet and a place where you can go, where you know that people are going to catch you when you fall, literally, is such an amazing feeling. The dedication cheer takes really makes you into a better person. In most sports, you have to do whatever you have to do to win the game and cheer you perform, so it's a whole different world over there. And believe it or not, there is a lot more than just throwing people and flipping around. It takes months to create a solid routine, and sometimes, we'll be in the South gym at 9:00 PM on a school night or 6:00 AM before school, saying, "Let's rerecord because we didn't like that or the way we hit that routine." We put everything we have into every practice and every performance, and we don't stop until it's perfect, and we get through it with each other. And then, when it's all over, we start up in a month or two again. And I can't wait to be a four-time state champion again this year. Thank you.
Here we go. Hello, everyone. My name is Jaden Welty. I'm a junior this year, and this is my second year in cheer. There's too many things to talk about when it comes to cheerleading, so I'll keep this short for everyone. If you didn't know, I'm a coed center on the cheer team, along with my best friend Angel Hernandez, who I recruited from football. Joining cheer, I didn't think it was going to be a walk-in-the-park or anything because I was on the football team, and it didn't seem like there's anything that could be harder than that. It didn't take me very long to figure that that wasn't a walk-in-the-park. I already said that. I'm sorry. Even though I was in football all the time, I still decided to join the cheerleading team. Joining cheer, I didn't think I was going to fit in all, but upon joining the team, I realized that I had become a part of another family. Since joining this family, we have accomplished many different things. We are three-time state champs, and we are undefeated in the coed division. This is not an easy accomplishment. Where am I? State titles are not handed to you. It takes months of practice, and we did a lot of that. Through the mornings, we came in at 6:00 AM, and the nights, we were there almost until 9:30, 10 o'clock, saying that we wanted to rerecord something because the stunt didn't hit or because we just weren't happy with how it went. Through all this, we probably came out on top for thirty in a row, and I couldn't be happier to do it again for a fourth year with my family backing me up. Thank you.
Any questions? Are we...
We'll get to questions.
Okay, great.
I just want to say, thank you so much for coming. We're so proud of you. Three straight state championships is incredible. You're like a bunch of Michael Jordans. I can't think of Brady's. But incredible, and I hope you just continue the success. And this is something that President Piasak and I have talked about in terms of really trying to highlight some of these special state-level accomplishments going forward, and you being the first one is very special to us.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments?
Yeah, just, I guess, a little bit of both. So, I'm a cheer dad, proud cheer dad. I've got two daughters. One's come through the school system and one's still in it, so another school, but we applaud your success for sure. I'm just curious if any of your... What are some of the key successes to the team? And did any of those maybe come from academics as far as sort of discipline or habits you've learned? Or can any of them be applied to academics?
Yeah. Do any of you want to jump into...
So, keys to success and how do they translate?
Yep. They're incredible. I truly think the key to success was when they started like recruiting their friends. When they started being like, "Oh, my gosh, this is so much fun. This made a difference in my life. I have this family. I have this connection right away." And then, them talking to their friends about that piece, and then, our program continues to get bigger and bigger and bigger. As a school counselor in the building, they realized very quickly... As a school counselor in the building, they realized very quickly I can access their grades. So I think that emphasis as a coach too of like, no, we really take this serious, and that is our top priority. And if you are not being academic grades, you're gonna sit until you're at that point. So I think we had strict guidelines, but they have met and exceeded every strict guideline we have given them, because they, just who they are. They're an amazing group of people. They really do look at that academic piece first. And then their talent level is just incredible. Also, we went from one girl doing like a back handspring, and again, it's been 11 years, it's been a long time. One girl doing this back handspring to now our entire team is doing like layouts. It's just crazy, their growth and their skill level. But that's them going to outside gymnastics areas, it's them working hard at every practice, coming to the practices and having these 11-month seasons that are very long. Anything to add?
I'll just say, a lot of the friendships that I have right now were made from the cheer team. And that's also who I see in my classes. So not only do my friends help me in the cheer environment, but they help me in the classroom, trying to keep me focused and just overall help me learn more on both sides.
The mentorship is amazing too. So they're coming in as eighth graders a lot of times too. They already have this network of people who've taken these classes who can help support them. And that's what a lot of our students offer to help each other too.
Mrs. Renacek?
Thank you. Well, I just wanted to say they have a great role model. You are so proud of them and passionate. And you're just a great person and leader in that position. I can see that they are all nodding and smiling, they love you. And I think that when you do have a role model and a leader in that position, then it's just contagious. So I think that you bragging about them, I'm sure they do the same for you.
Thank you very much. And two of our coaches, actually, actually all our, all our coaches besides me, were actually all South alum. So it's really cool to have seen that now our head coach for cheer, our assistants, our JV coaches, all of them have been South cheerleaders at some point. So it's been really fun to coach them all at one point, and now all of them are taking over this program. So thank you, it's very kind, but it's just fun to see them now being the leaders and carrying it forward. It's amazing, so thank you.
Mr. Comel?
Thank you. What were some of the challenges that you guys had to overcome to get to that state-level championship?
Jump really fast on that one.
6:00 AM practices, those were a lot of fun recording during COVID. Definitely trying to live up to the standards of the people before, me and Angel. We've run through a lot of guys, and I think me and Angel are the ones that are really going to stick through with it. Hitting stunts is probably one of the hardest things during practice. When, me and Angel actually come from football practice right after that, and that's a three-and-a-half-hour practice. And we're just dead and drained, and the whole team is just trying to keep you up, and you gotta hit that stunt. Like, oh, we got a competition coming up, we need this stunt to hit. And we're on our fourth full out, and we're all just drained. It's really, really tiring, but at the end, performing in front of that large crowd and everybody cheering you on is just amazing. It's so much fun.
And I think one thing I would say, I was back on the team in 2009, so that's when we had one back handspring. I guess really the biggest thing is, back then, we were all girl. We really didn't have boys that we were competing with. So then being a coach and then going into this with boys, we're like, this is a whole different ballgame. So now we have to like learn everything, and it's kind of strategic on how you do it. So it was very confusing for us in the beginning of like, okay, now we go from all-girl to all-boy. Or not all-boy, but with boys, it's really focused on them and their stunting. So that was a huge, huge hurdle to get over.
Thank you.
One more question. Back to the boys. Okay, this is just a part of me that thinks, how do you stand up to people that might tease you and say, you go from football to cheering? How do you do that, and what do you say to them?
Well, that was probably the biggest challenge. My freshman year, my girlfriend was on the cheer team, and she came from gymnastics, which is a big challenge for her. I got bullied a lot my sophomore year when people found out that I was on the cheer team, which to me didn't make sense, because there was actually two other guys that were on the cheer team that were also in football at the same time. So it didn't really make sense, but we don't really get bullied anymore, because when people bully me, I would say, okay, do you have three state titles? What do you have? I don't think you do, so put up or shut up is what I usually say. We don't get much of that anymore, but it used to be really bad before the state titles came along.
It was really hard to recruit even.
Yeah, that's probably the most challenging thing. Angel, he, he was different though. He, I told him about, and he was like, let's do it. Like, he came to a practice before he was even on a team, and he was already doing stuff. There's been other people that we had that were a little bit hesitant joining the team, because they were just like, oh, is this, I don't know if I can say, is this gay? Like, I don't know if it's gay or not, because we always get bullied for that. That's the one thing, like, people always say that to us. But then again, do you have three state titles? I don't think so, so that was the most challenging thing.
I think Angel's the best listener there is, so.
Oh, yeah.
I think once I get involved, it's been incredible to watch at competitions of being like, oh, my gosh, this is like a normal. Like, a lot of different teams have male cheerleaders, and like seeing that role modeling and seeing like, oh, my gosh, that's successful. And then like, ooh, that guy can do that, like, I want to learn how to do that. I want to be able to toss her up and catch her with one hand and keep her up here, like, that drive. And I think once you get into that setting where you see it happening between you don't see at your high school, it really kind of builds it too, so.
And I'm sure you probably don't trust any other guy to throw your girlfriend up in the air. So you could come back with that too.
Well, I love how you all talk about your cheer family and how you've created a family. I'm sure that your extended families have done a lot to support you, to get you here. And so kudos to them, because you are all just amazing young people. And congratulations on your accomplishments, we're really proud of you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, now we're moving on to our reports from our student representatives. And we have student representatives joining us tonight from East High School and E-Achieve. Which one are we starting with? I see Mr. Smith got up.
I'll go first, I'm here.
We'll start with you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Jason Smith, I'm the principal at E-Achieve Academy in E-Achieve Elementary. And we have two students that were with us here in January, and they're both back. David Alesski and Katrina Walczek, and they're joining us from WebEx. Just want to say thanks for the opportunity to have our student board reps come back and give you an update on the state of the state at E-Achieve, and also a little update on their post-secondary plans. Katrina's gonna kick things off, and when she finishes, David will share his story, then I'll open it up to some questions. So Katrina, it's all yours. Welcome.
Okay, great to see everybody again. My name's Katrina Walczek, and I'm from Milwaukee, Wisconsin. I have been at E-Achieve for the past two-and-a-half years. I am graduating this spring as a junior, which is a great accomplishment, and I'm so happy to do it. After this spring and the fall, I will be heading to Appleton, and I'll be attending Lawrence University to obtain my bachelor's degree. I will be majoring in pre-med and gender studies, with the hope to eventually go to med school and become a pediatrician. Through the summer, I will be continuing my work and my work teaching throughout the school year. So I really hope to continue those rest of the summer and going into Appleton. E-Achieve has been great at preparing me for college. They have been great at helping me learn time management, as well as giving me control of my classes and learning something I know. The duo he threw all the years is Julia Culver. She has been my English teacher and also helped with book club. She's been great at just giving out support, helping me through the college application process, and just being there whenever I needed her. Those are all the updates that I have for you guys. Thank you so much for supporting Waukesha Virtual Learning and giving you the chance to be representative.
Thanks, Katrina. David, it's your turn.
Good evening, everyone. My name is David Alessi, and I'm from Milwaukee, Wisconsin. I've been a student at E-Achieve all through high school. And over the last four years, I've had many inspiring and passionate teachers who put a lot of effort into making E-Achieve a wonderful school. I strongly appreciate all the time and effort these wonderful people have put into encouraging me to explore many subjects and grow in each one. In general, E-Achieve has prepared me for a life after high school by teaching me how to be productive and succeed in an online work environment, and also manage my time efficiently and effectively. Next year, I'll be starting college at Milwaukee, at the Milwaukee School of Engineering, and I'll be majoring in computer science. I hope to earn my undergraduate degree there and become a software engineer in the field of artificial intelligence. However, I would not have been able to pursue my dreams had not for the education E-Achieve gave me. I'd like to thank all of you for supporting virtual learning, as well as for inviting me to the student representative period tonight.
Thanks, David, thanks, Katrina. Any questions or comments for our student, our student reps?
Mr. Comel?
Thank you. Katrina, I'm a graduate of Lawrence, 1984. I'm dating myself here a little bit. Just wondering why you chose Lawrence, and what challenges are you looking forward to?
So I was always looking at great pre-med schools. Usually I was kind of looking out of state, and then I was kind of learning in-state, it was cheaper, so I was heading towards that. A few months ago, I actually headed up to campus, and as soon as I got there, I was just like, wow, this place is beautiful. I, my tour guide was actually another pre-med study student. I played violin and cello, she was also involved with that, as well as swimming, because since I like bar, it was perfect. There, they have an amazing pre-med program. Their science building is four stories, each story for a different realm of study. And overall, they were giving me great scholarships, between academic and merit scholarships. I was able to obtain about $48,000 to help pay for my schooling from them. They also have St. Elizabeth Hospital right over there. And I am involved with getting ready to go do some shadowing there at the end of my freshman year, and possibly in the late winter during Christmas break.
I can tell you are very pleased with your choice, and you haven't lived it yet, but I predict that you're gonna have a wonderful experience there. I know it changed me. People sometimes question, why do you go to a liberal arts, you know, institution? Well, guess what it prepared me to be? An entrepreneur. And there wasn't one business class, because there's so much that goes into being an entrepreneur, far beyond understanding business. And everyone thinks it's about business. Same thing for med school, pre-med. There's more to it than just understanding science and understanding the human body, so on and so forth. And you're gonna get, you're gonna have exposure to many of those things that will help you to become a great communicator, a great thinker. And I really wish you luck going forward, and I hope you have a fantastic time at Lawrence, and really challenge yourself and grow, because it's really up to you to challenge yourself, not your professors. It's up to you. If you want to do it, the challenges are there. If you want to stretch yourself, you can stretch yourself. If you want to kick back, you can do that too, but if you want to stretch yourself, it's a wonderful university. Are you gonna maybe, maybe consider the Conservatory of Music, at least maybe for a club, or maybe for some performance, or?
Yes, I have played violin and cello. I studied with cello in about fifth grade, so I've had about four years of that and two years of violin. So overall, my main focus would be if I want to go to the Conservatory, I would do pop cello again. And because of that, they would also offer me even more scholarships.
Yeah, fantastic.
Something I've been heavily considering.
Yeah, yeah, great, well, I wish you luck.
Any other questions? Mr. Moore?
Just had a comment for David and Katrina. It is amazing to see the work that you both have done, and I wish you well in college. I'm not that far out of college, I'm in my twenties. So if you have any questions or anything that you need advice on, feel free to reach out to me. I wish both of you so well in college and good luck.
Anything else? Mr. Zenobia?
Congratulations to the both of you. Just general questions for each of you. What have you found to be something that's maybe been easiest being a virtual student that you could share with other students? And also, what are some of the challenges that you faced? Just one example of each, maybe.
Yes, I'll go first. One of the easiest things for me, which I know wasn't easy for a lot of people, was taking control of my education. When I originally joined E-Achieve, I wasn't sure how everything was exactly kind of set up, whether it was just like other virtual schools I've seen where you go to class maybe two hours a week, and that's it. I found that all my teachers, even though they're not with me in a classroom, they're there. I have pace charts that outline everything for me per week. I can work ahead if I want to, I can go a little bit slower if I need to, but I know that support is always there. It's just an email or a phone call away. One of the hardest things for me, I guess, was just adjusting to not being in a regular school setting. For me, it was not waking up at 7:00 AM every day and going home at 4:00. It was more prepping myself, am I gonna do this today? Am I gonna do that today? I didn't have it set where I have an advisory period and I have to do this class at this time. So it was a lot more freedom that I kind of had to rein in and figure out how to pace myself.
Yeah, I'd say that a lot of the same things apply to me. I also find that the flexibility is definitely an advantage because of online learning. You know, even if you travel or you have, if a student has, for example, some things going on in the real world that they can't, you know, that would prevent them from going to a normal school environment. You know, E-Achieve or other virtual schools are a perfect option, because they can manage their schedule however they want. The teachers are very nice and helpful, and so, you know, if you turn in an assignment a little bit late, they wouldn't let that slide. They're, you know, they're very understanding, and so that's definitely good. But one of the harder things was, at times, was the lack of socialization. Like, you know, usually, you know, if you go to a regular school setting, they see their classmates or peers on a daily basis. And, you know, we don't always get that. I think that the whole E-Achieve community is all very great, and we all support each other very well. So I think everything just worked on its own, or, you know, with us.
Thank you.
Say one more. I know Katrina, you said you're gonna live on campus. David, are you planning to live on campus in MS, at Milwaukee School of Engineering? I know it's not that far, some students choose to commute and some students choose to live on campus, so what have you decided?
Yes, I would be living at the Herbin-Gates Tower. So that's actually right next to the computer science building.
Awesome, I think that's very important to like, you know, just, you know, just because, you know, we live by. It's always good to be on campus and engage and actually be in the community and grow with your peers. I can say that I loved college, I lived on campus all four years. And I was able to grow and really meet people from all over the world, from China, Mexico, Brazil, Tennessee, Florida. So I got that experience, I think that you have that same experience as well. So good luck to both of you, so.
And David was selected for an early, a scholarship program where he can attend, start attending early, start taking some online classes in the summer, and get on campus a little bit early. And he's been sharing with me this week, he's looking forward to that opportunity, so congratulations on that, that selection.
Wonderful. Anything else? Well, David and Katrina, thank you both, congratulations and best of luck to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I know we have also Samantha in the room, and I see Mrs. Poppy with her. So Samantha Weinford from East High School. Do you want to come to the podium?
Hi, I'm Samantha.
Your casting.
Hi, I'm Samantha. I am a sophomore at Waukesha East. This is my first year attending East. And if I do say so myself, I have really come on my shell and found my voice. One thing I want to share with you is my dream job of being a cosmetologist. And for the first time, I know I can achieve this goal. You see, I now have a plan to work hard on my classes so I can attend WCPC's cosmetology program during my senior year. I know this is achievable because I have the support of my parents and my Waukesha East family. So now that you know a little about me, I want you to show, I want to show you East from a student's point of view. The students at East have many different pathways to earn their high school diplomas. First, there's a credit program, which is my chosen path. This program is for students grades nine through 12 that are earning high school credits through personalized hands-on learning experiences. Second, we have our competency program. Comp is for students in 12th grade who work on demonstrating proficiency in our state's priority standards in order to earn a competency diploma. Third, we have GITO, otherwise known as GED Option 2 program. Here, students work on acquiring the skills necessary to pass math, learning, or language arts, science, social studies for the GED test. However, they must also complete coursework in employment skills, financial literacy, health and government. Additionally, they must be employed and complete service hours upon completion of our GITO. Students will learn traditional high school diploma. Next, we have our Junior Phoenix Program. This is for middle school students who benefit from a smaller school setting and more personalized learning community. Finally, we have WCA, or the Waukesha Transition Academy. This program is for our young adults ages 18 to 21. This program is for young adults ages eighteen to twenty-one who have special learning needs. WCA supports students in learning employment skills, independent living skills and self-advocacy in this community setting. One thing I love about East is the way we are able to connect with our Waukesha East community through service learning projects. From setting up Oktoberfest to working in the Hope Center and St. Vincent's to create Valentines and wreaths for senior living centers. And even adopting a family through the Christmas Clearing Council. Waukesha East loves to give back. Even more amazing is that our school has a giving room, which supplies food and clothing to classmates and their families that are in need. Our teachers, students and district office collect items that are given to those in need. Like I said, we love giving back. These volunteer experiences allow us to have positive impact on our community while teaching us how to collaborate and use interpersonal skills in diverse communities. Now, let's take a look behind the closed doors of East. Here's the great thing, here are like some good things that are brewing. Besides academics, we're also, we also have so many opportunities that sparks our curiosity and ignition and our imagination. For example, we don't just learn from textbooks. As you can see, we have four females and one male leopard gecko. These are honorary East members that have allowed us to witness the life cycle. We have been breeding these lovely critters and who have given us X. We are monitoring in our classroom incubator currently. After our first failed attempt at using the incubator, we were successful and we have currently four juvenile babies and four more on the way. Please don't worry about them overrunning East. We're partnering with a local pet store that will find homes for our young ones. Not going to lie, this is pretty awesome. Another fantastic opportunity we got to experience was our manufacturing week at East. Students were able to explore manufacturing careers from touring Metal Tech to having a day at WCTC. Students learned about welding, auto mechanics and many other trades available to them once they graduate. The week ended with a manufacturing fair where local companies like Quad Graphics and Metal Tech partnered with the Job Center, WCTC and apprenticeships programs to offer insight into the career opportunities. What a way to learn about job opportunities. If you remember, we are also home to Waukesha Transition Academy. Once a semester, that one student, that students can participate is renew and reuse. Here, the young adults learn how to use, how to take disregarded furniture and make it new again. From standing, from sanding to painting to staining. WCA students participate in real-life hands-on learning. So not only do we refinish furniture, we cook. Our culinary arts program is known for its scrumptious cooking skills. From creating weekly meals, our staff and students alike gets a sample. These building chefs provide all the meals for our family engagement nights and recognize, and recognition assemblies. They are even going to be showcasing their skills of this year's graduation ceremony and celebrations. Another real-life opportunity East students have to participate in is Money Coach. East partners with Secure Futures and Financial Planning Organizations made up of advisors who work directly with students on all things money, taxes, credits, savings, budgeting and financial planning. What is sounding is that Money Coach partners believe that students need to have money in order to learn how to be responsibly to use it. So these students earn money by successfully meeting up their goals throughout this eleven-week program. If goals were met, we will have earned three hundred and fifty dollars. How amazing is that? Along with life courses, East engages our student body in many school-wide events. Throughout the year, we have had several spare weeks from dressing up in costumes to wearing our PJs. All of us have a blast in dressing up or dressing down, having a fun school community. Now, when you think of East, you may not think of dancing. Well, this year, the young adults of WTA planned two amazing dances, the Fall Ball and the Spring Fling. These students planned it all. The DJ, the food and the decorations. Not only did WTA shake their groove thing all night, they invite students with special needs from all three Waukesha high schools. Another event that you may not know of is Waukesha East Family Engagement Nights. Each, each time we hold these events, the turnout grows. Families come together to eat the tasty meals that students in the culinary arts created are just for them. We have games, arts activities, trivia, raffles, and more importantly, families get to know each other, staff and students who make up East in a relaxed atmosphere. These students are always learning and growing academically, socially, emotionally. And because of, and because of the great things we are accomplishing, our teachers want to acknowledge these accomplishments, so we get together for assemblies where students are recognized. Awards are given for the student of the month attendance and the coveted Phoenix Flyer. In case you were wondering, the Phoenix Flyer displays the characteristics that make up our East pillars, integrity, grit and excellence. This year, this year has progressed. East students started to reach at our learning, reach out our learning experiences beyond the classroom of our walls, behind the classroom and the walls of our school. In April, Junior Phoenix students led Disability Awareness Month. T-shirts were ordered, bulletin boards were made, awareness bracelets, stickers and buttons were created. And the whole school was invited to display or to the disability awareness simulations that were held in our gym. Students got to experience how, students got to experience what it was like to be mobilized in a wheelchair or be blind or how to tie shoes if their hands didn't work too well. I must say, the Junior Phoenix students did hit this event out of the park. Should you wish to, should you wish to see some of the amazing work we are doing, the public library has them display the Egyptian projects our Phoenix, our Phoenix students created. Or you may wish to venture to the Waukesha Historical Society where you can see our connection to Waukesha's artifacts that highlights our personal connection to Waukesha and our families. So I hope you enjoy learning a little bit about Waukesha East. But all I'm going to say is stay tuned. Next year, our whole school is moving towards project-based learning where our investive, our inquisitive nature will let loose in an authentic, interactive learning model. Oh, before I forget, I would like you to see our way. This is our goal for all students who are attending East, graduation. Thank you so much for having me here this evening.
I don't know if you all have any questions? Thank you, Samantha. Yes, are there any questions or comments? Mrs. Ramon Jack?
Thank you so much. You have given me just a whole new glimpse into your school. You guys are doing more than I've ever heard. And it just sounds like you're just really proud to be there. You're a great speaker. And I have a salon, so if you ever want to come down and check it out and make sure that's what you really want to do or what, you're more than welcome anytime. Spend the day, spend a week, get a job there. Oh, I'll get you busy. But I appreciate all the pictures that you put together. Did you make that? Did you put that PowerPoint?
Yeah, I did. Me and Ms. Poppy worked together on it. Because I've never done anything like this before, so she kind of helped out me through it.
Yes, that was excellent. So thank you so much. You're doing more than I've ever heard and I'm just really proud of you.
Thank you.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes, Samantha, thank you. Can you give us a sense of, did you choose the credit program route? Was that, you know, did you have some guidance with the principal? And, you know, how, how does that process work?
So I'm a sophomore, so there's only really the credit program I can go into. I chose to make the switch from my home high school here just to help me out and to help me get ahead almost, because I heard it was a really good school to be at. But otherwise, you can enroll for like comp and GEDO and all that. You can enroll for all of that. And then they'll check like all of your past and all that and make sure that you would be in the perfect fit. Otherwise, we can move to you to a different program to make sure you're in a good fit for you.
Okay. What, what are going to be some of the highlights of your senior year, do you think?
Probably going to college and getting a head start on that.
Excellent, excellent. Thank you. I appreciated your report.
Thank you.
Anyone else? You're certain, oh, go ahead, Mr. Moore.
You are a remarkable inspiration. And so seriously, please stay in touch with us. I want to check in with you and see how you're doing. I mean that, so I pop in at East and see how you're doing. And I'm very, I'm extremely proud of you.
Thank you.
Couldn't agree more. You did a wonderful presentation and we're excited to see what your future looks like. Thank you so much. All right. We're now at the section of our meeting where there's an opportunity for citizens to speak. We have eight speakers tonight. Because there are more than six speakers, each individual will be limited to three minutes. We will signal the speaker at two and a half minutes to begin to wrap up comments. We expect all speakers to honor our time limit, refrain from using any inappropriate language and be respectful in their comments. Speakers who do not meet these expectations may be prohibited from speaking at future board and committee meetings. Speakers are here to address the board, not the audience. The school board does not endorse any comments made by members of the community here tonight. We would like to remind our community members of the impact of their words on others and that our students are watching. We commit to communicating with you in respectful and productive ways and ask that you do the same. We also expect that the audience will be respectful of the speaker and of the board and refrain from responding with verbal comments, cheering, applause or other behavior that will detract from the meeting. Please note that no obstructions can be created between the board and the audience. Visual aids cannot be used and the area behind the speaker and podium will be clear during public comment. Also, in order to respect our speakers and meeting participants, please silence your cell phones. Our first speaker tonight will be Paul Archimol.
Hey, you got that pretty close. Although I got to say, I got bigger note cards than the kids coming up here with their cell phones. First off, my name's Paul Archimol. I want to thank you, first-time speaker, probably won't make a habit of this, it's not really my comfort zone. But I'm here in love and to raise the level of awareness. It seems like we're going down a road of defining our youth by their sexuality and race. I'm not your enemy, I'm not an extremist, I'm not a terrorist. I'm your neighbor, a friend, a God-loving patriot and a father. We stand together with our children. Thank you for the service of the departing board members. I welcome the new members with a lesson. We, the silent majority, will not tolerate the injustices with mass, virtual learning, fear mongering, et cetera, for the last two years that have made suicide rates and other sad statistics go up because of the sacrifices our youth have had to make. As a parent of two in this district, this is my fault. For too long, we sat back and let this happen. They're introducing sexual literature to K-three students in Grafton right now and didn't even inform the parents. Verify that, because it looks like it's ongoing. Our children are a gift from God. Their innocence is intoxicating. Teachers and parents understand how strong their energy is and it shouldn't be used for selfish reasons or undervalued. I'd rather see the Constitution, Bill of Rights, et cetera, taught to show how we are a constitutional republic, not a democracy and what the difference is. Move to a true socialist or communist country and you'll see what real bigotry and racism is. Sexual conversations are inappropriate at school, especially for small children by a straight white male like me or the LGBTQ community. I don't want my boys groomed for a certain lifestyle. I want them to learn how to think, not what to think. I learned in college from Piaget that young children aren't ready for these subject matters and it just confuses them. These are our teachable moments. We get to decide when they're ready. Their inquisitive minds and trusting spirits are ours to mold and protect from the realities of life. I don't want that taken from me. As a toxic masculine male, not my definition, it's our job to protect them until they can discern the truth for themselves. The inability to listen on the opposing side is what I see as a major problem. I'm reminded of the sculpture final I did where I pointed out the righteousness and hypocrisy of the two major social groups I interacted with and their narrow-minded comments of each other. The art majors, as I graduated in education with emphasis in art, with awards, and a Division One athlete scholarship at UWM with also awards. Their difference, our differences are what make us unique, not privileged. The more we stress our differences, the more it divides us. I'm reminded by Martin Luther King who said, judge a person by the content of their character, not the color of their skin. And actually, I finished a lot faster than, yeah, there's the bell. Sorry, I get to talk now, so I'll say, I'll just say it's really stressful, because I did this and I rehearsed it so I could get to two forty-five and I was fifteen seconds faster. It's like you're wrestling and they're banging on the wall saying, thirty seconds! So I'm glad I did. But I did want to say, my last ten seconds, I do have a credentials and resource list in case people want to trust, would verify. Look up who Piaget was and why he found that children of that age cognitively can't understand it. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Next up is Eric Eggers, followed by Stacy Keen.
Pretty quick tonight, just two notes of congratulations. First to Greta Voight, the North High Science teacher who was awarded GSF's Educator of the Year for her efforts in creating a safer classroom environment for LGBTQ plus students. It's an important effort toward promoting students' health and performance and it's worth recognizing and supporting. Secondly, I offer my sincere congratulations to our new board members and our election victories. I ask you to please make the most of this opportunity to show that you will listen to and represent all of us and not just the people who voted for you, that you care more about the well-being of our students, parents, teachers and staff than about policing any political party. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Stacy Keen, followed by Lindsay Fleck.
Hello, everyone. I'm so happy to see all of your faces here tonight. But as grateful as I am to see all of you, I also want to know that we'll still be holding all of you accountable. I'm not going away. Your job will be different than the previous boards, though. They trusted administration to do what was right without questioning anything. As a result, we continue to have declining test scores and very low proficiency in reading and math. They allowed activism in our classrooms and inappropriate books in our libraries. Your job now is to ask them tough questions to make sure every decision they make is for the good of educating our children. Increasing proficiency. So many people asked during the campaign, I would see on social media is, what are you three going to do, speaking to the three new candidates, about increasing proficiency? It's not your job to come up with that plan. It's the administration and the teachers' job to make that happen. It's your job, if that doesn't happen, to then find people who will make it happen if they can't. And then if it's still not happening, finding, find other people to make it happen. It's your job to make sure you have the people in place to do it. Never before was administration held to this standard. Previous boards did not demand enough and accepted bad results. This cannot happen going forward. Also, I want to touch on books again. They like to come and talk that they only found five books. They only removed five books and moved them to high schools. These five books were so disgusting, they had no choice but to take them out. They're still in our high schools, just not in our middle schools. There are so many more that we have brought to their attention that are still available for young students to read without parental consent. That's all we've ever asked for is parental consent. If these books were movies, they would not be allowed in our schools. And if they were, parents would have to have, have to sign a permission slip to have them shown. When did educators stop trying to protect the innocence of our children? When did they start participating in this idea to hyper-sexualize children? Too many educators are active participants in this and for the life of me, I will never understand why. It will never be their job to decide what is appropriate for my child or anybody else's child of what is appropriate and what isn't. Parental consent needs to be given for so many of the books in our libraries and not just when a parent requests this. It should be the standard. Schools should be protecting our children, not trying to expose them to things that go beyond their maturity level. I look forward to seeing what you do with our schools to improve them and see our students growing and learning.
Thank you. Next up is Lindsay Fleck, followed by Paul Reese.
Excuse me. Hi, everybody. Thank you, as always, for having me up here. I wanted to just talk in relation a little bit to student achievement. I know a little while back, it was shared with you, a slide of some of our student achievement scores. And one of the sectors in particular that was highlighted was achievement of African-American students. It was shown to be very low. And for me and in the profession that I'm in, like, all I could think is, we have to do something about that. We must do something about that. I want to share a story with you. Right now, I work with a school in the state of Minnesota. Ninety-six percent, to give you a little context, ninety-six percent minority population, primarily African-American. Larger population of free or reduced lunch students in the school than ninety-five percent of the state. Multiple first-year teachers, staffing shortages, just like we're facing. They are still quarantining for the COVID. So if there's any kind of, any kind of exposure, anything, they still quarantine. So on average, students and teachers have missed about a month of school each. Last year, during COVID and during hybrid learning, we raised our proficiency rates according to running records from forty percent of students to sixty percent. This year, our preliminary scores are showing in our high-stakes assessments that we've raised our literacy proficiency from thirty-eight percent to fifty-five percent and our math from thirty-two percent to forty-five percent. These are very similar to the statistics that I shared with you via email of some of the work that I've done in the past. And I'm not here because I want to brag, I'm here because I want to. And I'm not here because I want to brag, I'm here because I want to work with you. And I don't know how to do that, and I don't know how to get access. So, we have a problem that we need to work together to solve. I think we all acknowledge it's a problem. We must solve it, and we can, and we know we people who can help us do it. And it's very important to me that we leverage those resources that we have because there are a lot of smart people in this community who want to work together and who want to contribute what they can, rather than condemn or criticize. The job is hard. Accept the help. Let people show you what's worked. Don't look for someone who promises you what's going to happen, look for someone who already did it and who's doing it right now. I want to take this opportunity to extend that help, not to tell you something, but to extend that I want to work with you. I see a problem and I know how to help solve it. And that's why I'm here, and that's what I want to do, and I just, I, I really hope that you'll take me up on that, and I really hope that you will feel encouraged in the work you do every day, and I appreciate all that you do. So, thank you.
Thank you, Lindsay. And next up is Paul Reese, followed by Tariq Akmut.
Good evening. Doctor, 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 Madam 10,000, how awesome is that? The silent majority spoke, and we gave you a mandate, and it's up to you what you do with it. You can make my job difficult next year, you can make it easy, and I'm going to hold you accountable if you don't make it easy, if you throw wet blankets on it and don't get things done. And I'll start right off by, where is Cory? You know? He's been gone too much, and he's going to make my job difficult next year if he keeps staying home. So, I'll start right off the bat with that. I, also, just, this was an awesome job you guys did, and it was a lot of work, and congratulations to you all. One thing that really excited me was Kelly's position as president, and there's a reason why. And it's different than what most people would realize. She was the one that sat across that hall when we were isolated back there in quarantine, in Nowhere Land. She was here. She went through it. She knows exactly what went on. When people say, "Oh, it wasn't the teachers that wanted this shutdown," she was there. She knew what went, what went on. She knows what I did when nobody was looking. She knows that I wasn't the instigator back there. I sat silent. She is a testimony to what happened. She knows, and what no one else here knows. She has firsthand experience, and to that, I am so grateful you sit where you sit. Also, the job you did picking the committees, I, it blew me away. I had just, awesome job, just how competent you are. I also wanted to talk about teaching and learning committee, you talked about discipline. And when it got into discipline, it talked about discipline, it talked about differences between the white students and black students who are being disciplined. Well, yeah, they're white and black, and you have whatever the apprenticeship is, but they're disciplined students. Why aren't we looking for what they have in common? What is wrong with the commonality here? Why are these kids in trouble? Is it drugs? Is it broken homes? Is it single parenting? What are the, some of the problems in here that need to be addressed? If we're just looking at the color of things, what does that get us? You know? Because it's absolutely nowhere but everyone parking at each other. You know? There are some problems here, and we need to address them, and we got some bad parenting we need to address, we have some bad parenting. You know, we used to have...
Thirty seconds?
Places where we were orphanages, and they weren't a good option. They were bad, but they were the better, better of two evils. This wasn't, there is no equation that comes out good when you have parents that are strung out on drugs that are absolute horrible to be around. There is no good option here. And we, as a, this society used to recognize that, and it doesn't anymore. So, thanks.
Thank you, Paul. Next up is Tariq Akmut, followed by Samuel DiAmico.
Good evening, members of the Board of Education of Waukesha, and to the new members. You know, some things have concerned me, and I think I'll kind of echo what a previous speaker said. When someone gets selected, they represent everyone, even the people who may not have voted for them. So you carry a big responsibility to, to bring varying opinions together to improve this school district. And it is our diversity that makes us stronger, okay? You know, if I were to ask everyone in this room here, "Are you biased?", I think lots of people would raise their hand that they're, they're not biased, but we all carry certain biases from our experiences as we age, and sometimes we can make changes in our lives to overcome those biases, to recognize people who may not be like us, and to work with them to improve stuff. I read in the Waukesha Patch this morning about Greta Voight, and the, and she told the Patch, "As an educator, I recognize that creating a safe learning environment is critical in allowing students to thrive as learners and individuals." She saw the effect of ensuring students were, were seen, respected, and given space to express them authentically. She won an award for her efforts, and I hope you, you as a board and the school district recognize her, you know? As the school district said in a statement, "Miss Voight is an example of our teachers being great educators and caring for all students." Well, then, act according to that. Allow different students to express their opinion, okay? Diversity. We all are not the same, okay? We may not all come from the same background or the same religions, but we all are part of this human race...
Thirty seconds?
And we should recognize that humanity that we have, to grow from it, and as a board, as a board, you guys, you folks can grow with it also. Thank you, and good luck in your future endeavors. Thank you.
Thank you, Tariq. Samuel DiAmico, followed by Amanda Raddi.
Good evening. Tonight, I'd like to speak on a few topics. First, welcoming our new members, and to thank Dr. Piasik for the revisions to the words spoken before public comment. I think they are vital reminders. Number one, the Board of Education will soon be discussing spending money on a tennis court, half a million dollars. Remind me, I thought we were in a structural deficit. How do we close an elementary school to save costs and then start spending money before we even saved a dime on the closure? Now, I'm not against the tennis court remodeling, I'm sure it needs it, however, it comes at quite a convenient time. Number two, ten months after Dr. Seibert's signage directive, we still have cases after cases where flags and signs are being taken from classrooms, hallways, and lockers. My pride flag and sign was taken down this week by students that have been up for nearly three months or so. We can call this kids being kids, or we can construct a policy that puts these posters in more places than just a few lockers. More kids feel accepted with more signs than your three-foot brochures of just district policies. Tonight, we saw sixteen resignations being approved from the HR Committee from our district, and I was talking to Mr. Moore about this issue before the meeting, discussing certain issues in our district, that our district was facing that is contributing to this, such as a political school board, bad principals, not enough pay. Either way, this is too many resignations to not ask why this is happening. Hope that comes up today when HR is discussing what they went through. Now, just one last thing I'd like to close out as we are ending this school year, ending the school year will be starting about three or four months or so. I think it's important that I echo what other, other speakers have echoed, that you guys got elected. Congratulations. Now it's time for you to, to represent all of us, not just those who voted for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Amanda Raddi. Hi, Amanda.
Hi. Good evening, everyone. I come to you tonight to congratulate the new board members. Job well done. To everybody else in the new positions, congratulations. As you may know, I come with a very unique perspective. I've sat in your seat, and I'd like to share some of that perspective with you this evening. To the new members, you are a very important piece of this board. You're the fresh eyes, you're the new perspective. That's good, that's very important for our district. You have an incredible responsibility on your shoulders, and I encourage you to lead by example. Lead with empathy. Show that you can lead with emotional intelligence. Encourage others to share ideas with you. Be a leader, a learner yourself. Now, it's easy to come in with preconceived ideas or marching orders from the outside, but there are many layers to this district. Take time to learn those layers. Learn from your fellow board members that sit around the table with you. Their time's served, and the history that they know about this district is priceless. Learn from the administrators that sit around you. They have decades upon decades, maybe some others upon decades, of experience. They come with teams behind them with even more experience, and all of them have dedicated their lives to education. Get to know the principals and the teachers and staff. They're your front lines. They will be your lens into the day-to-day of the district. Parents and students themselves will share how the decisions that you will make will impact them directly. There are many stakeholders in this district, but do not lose focus on the students. Their safety and education is a priority. Remember them as a whole person with feelings, different experiences, cultures, dreams, aspirations, and abilities. And lastly, enjoy this. You have been given an amazing opportunity. Take advantage of the invites that you're given to go into the schools and to see the programs. Now, there are many across the district that you have a natural connection to. Take pride in representing them. It's an amazing feeling, and it's very special. But there are also the many in this district that you don't have that connection to. Get to know them. Open your ears and your hearts to them. They're going to enrich your lives personally, just as they already do in the community. Now, the eyes of many are going to be upon all of you. So my advice is to take this...
Thirty seconds?
All day by day. Trust and build relationships with your administrators, teachers, and staff. Keep your ears, minds, hearts, and open to learning. Remember, our students are the reason why we are all here. Again, I say to you, you have a heavy burden to bear, but the good news is, is you're not alone. I sincerely pray for each and every one of you around this room tonight. I pray that you lead us well. Thank you, and God bless.
Thank you, Amanda. And thank you to all of our speakers tonight. So now, we're moving on to our minute approval, and we have three sets of minutes to approve tonight. We have minutes from the April 13th regular board meeting, the April 13th executive session, and the April 25th board reorganization meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Mr. McCaffrey? Seconded by Mr. Zenobia? Any discussion, changes, or modifications? Okay, Sue, if we could take the roll call?
Mark Barowski?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Karen Reinacek?
Aye.
Anthony Zenobia?
Aye.
Markell Moore?
Aye.
Kerry Kozlowski?
Aye.
Joseph Como?
Aye.
Kelly Piasik?
Aye.
Eight-zero. Thank you, Sue. Moving on to our communications. Dr. Seibert?
None this evening, doctors.
Okay, thank you. And then, our WEF report. Before we go on to the report, I just would like to announce that Mark Barowski will be taking over the role of our WEF liaison from Mr. Montijo. And while Mr. Montijo isn't here tonight, I did want to thank him for serving in that role last year. So, Mr. Barowski, go ahead.
All right, thank you, Dr. Piasik. And I just would, on behalf of WEF, I would echo your comments about Cory and just thanking him for his service last year, and hopefully I can kind of pick up where he left off. Had a few challenges with that so far. Their last board meeting did get canceled, so I didn't get a chance to meet the board yet. I will next month when they, they have their next meeting. And then I've spoken with the Executive Director, Lynette Kalnidge, by phone and via emails. We just haven't met yet. We're also going to do that early June, which will happen before our next board meeting. So, that being said, there's an awful lot of updates because this is their busy time of year, so I'm going to touch on the highlights. For starters, and actually, you have a lot of the materials at your desk, which I'll point out to you as I go through the updates. For starters, the 2022 WF grants have been approved, and they are very pleased to announce that they're providing a gift to the school district of $40,000 to fund the 2022 grants. And they had over $74,000 in requests, and they funded 54% of those, and they're, you know, very happy and very proud of that. That's the highest they've ever done for the district. They're going to be providing 15 different schools, including some programs that impact many schools. Again, more to come next month on that. They are preparing for their surprise grant deliveries, looking forward to presenting a symbolic check to the district, to the Board of Education this fall. And I also want to thank the School District of Waukesha Business Office for helping us to distribute this money as teachers spend their grant dollars. The WF Partners in Education reception will be held on June 15th at Carroll University in the Ballroom, the second floor campus center. The event's going to run from 5:00 to 6:30 and honor our business partners and scholarship recipients and donors. And again, they're just reiterating that the record of $40,850 in scholarships this year. The Board of Education members, all of us are welcome to attend that event, and there is a flyer on your desks for the screen card one for the Partners in Education event, so you can take a look at that for more, more information. They would like us all to RSVP if you are planning on attending by May 27th. That is the hard deadline, so you cannot attend if you don't RSVP by the 27th. There is no charge to attend the event, but of course, a donation to help them cover the cost of the free event is appreciated. Dress is casual, they're encouraging people to either wear their college gear or their favorite school gear. Another flyer that you have in front of you is for the 16th Annual Golf Outing, so that's a big fundraiser for them. That's a flyer that's on your, on the desk in front of you. That's going to be August 4th at Ironwood Golf Club in Sussex. Golf registration's open, they already have well over 150 people, and their goal is 170, and there's also some sponsorship opportunities left as well. So you just, just check out the WF website for that, or you could email Lynette herself. Sponsorships, so they've been reporting out on annual sponsorships each month. Are pleased to share that they now have welcomed Meyer, Meyer Foods, to their family of annual sponsors. Meyer's a constant supporter of the schools, and they were the winner of the 2020 Corporate Partner Award, and they're now a silver sponsor. So huge thanks to Stacy Maynard, General Manager at Meyer Waukesha Store, for all their, her support. Lastly, scholarships. Maybe not last, maybe second last, scholarships, again, the awarding of the $40,000 scholarships to the family. New record, they're thrilled about that. They're going to announce the scholarship winners at each high school's annual scholarship night, and this year, all three schools have programs on May 19th. And then they're going to celebrate the winners at that reception on June 15th that I, that I mentioned to you. They have 58 scholarship winners, including 54 high school seniors and four middle school band students. And again, very proud of those, those great students. A couple of reminders to wrap up. They are celebrating 20 years of supporting teachers and students this year in 2022. They would love to secure 20 new annual sponsors. So they're asking for our help in reaching that goal by sharing your contacts or making instruction to possibly recruit more sponsors. And if you've got contacts interested in the annual event sponsorships, please email Lynette or give her a call at extension 1143. And then a WEF recognition award nomination window is now open. Everything's online under the awards tab. They're seeking nominees for corporate partner, community partner, and the Sally Jo McAlcoe Lifetime Excellence in Education Awards. Nomination window closes on July 1st, and winners will be announced at the Evening for Education, which is planned for February 16th of, of next year. So, quite a few to kick things off for me, and if you've got any questions, I guess there's some information on your desk in front of you. Also, I don't know if I mentioned the annual report. They're providing that as well, so.
Thank you very much. Any questions? I will say, Ironwood is an excellent golf course, and August golf outings are great. Everybody should have their game in good shape by then, so no excuses. So, you know, credit to all the work that's being done by, by WEF that helps out our schools. So, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
All right. We do have a special item under general business tonight, included in your Friday communication and also explained in a memo in your Friday, April 29th packet, our changes to three policies that relate to how we will operate our committees. So, I'd like to turn this over to Dr. Cook, who's going to present those changes.
Thank you. So, as the board was onboarded and new committees were assigned, this happens annually, sometimes there are... Sometimes there are tweaks to the committee name. New committees are added, some committees are taken away, and we sometimes adjust business afterwards. Because we didn't have a policy committee scheduled in and around the time that the new committees were getting going, we've put this in the action item for the whole board business this evening. So there's three policies that are up for discussion tonight by the board. I'll present all three, and then I'll turn it back over to Dr. Piasik so you can discuss. The first one is 0131.1, the bylaws and policies. There's a statement added in here that the board president and their designee has the authority to assign policies to committee for review or move policies between committee or directly to the full board for final approval. That's an addition. If you look on A and B on the first page of the policy, you can see that policy debate is going to be handled in the policy or in the committee that would be addressing the policy. So for instance, Finance and Facilities will be addressing all finance-type policies in the district. Teaching and Learning will take care of curricular policies. Human Resources will take care of human resources policies. So this policy change addresses that. Under 0155 committees, that's been updated to just address the general structure. So the charter school liaison position has been removed. We have added on the bottom of the first page of the policy this to see guidelines in 0167.3 for public comment at board meeting to talk about how we will interact with the public during our board meetings and committee meetings. And then the general committee structure and who will take care of what or which committee will take care of what is outlined on the second page of their policy. And then again, that language is captured there. The third policy up is just the agenda. We do have our policy structure listed in, or our agenda is listed in the policy structure, so 0166, and it covers the major headings. So if you look at the policy 0166 agenda, there's no changes to the first page. And then on the second page, you can see that the Government Relations Committee ad hoc has been replaced with the Student Services Committee ad hoc. So, Dr. Piasik, that is the.
Thank you. So I would open up for any questions or discussion regarding these policies. Mr. Como?
Yeah, I do have just maybe one clarification. When we're looking at 131.1, the bylaws, the board president and their designee, is that the policy chairperson who?
That would be the intent. That'd be the policy chair. The reason for the designee would be in the case that there may be an administrator who we would want to make that decision. But the intent is most likely the policy committee chair. So for example, a new modification to a policy comes in that we may want to route, maybe belongs to the TNL policy set, but we may want to move it to HR because it has something to do about instruction. I don't know, I'm just making it up. But that would allow some discretion over where those are assigned.
Yeah, I think I might be a little bit more comfortable with the policy chair. I'm trying to come up with an example of when we would.
Yeah, it does make sense, actually. Yeah.
What makes sense, making a policy chair?
Instead of the designee, would just read Policy Committee Chairperson. Which is again, the intent. Just didn't want to be too specific. But certainly, if it's the board president or the policy committee chair, I think that would cover anything.
Can I hear him just read that statement again, then? Dr. Cook, maybe?
Sure, the statement, as I heard it, would read, "The board president and the policy committee chair has the authority to assign policies to committees."
So can we take that just as an amendment to the proposal? Do we need to formalize that?
Yeah, we haven't made a motion, so I can just take the note, and we'll make sure that it's corrected in the formal document.
Any other questions or comments? Yes, Mr.?
Yeah, I think it needs to also change on page two of the committees, 155. If you look towards the very bottom there, it says the board president and their designee. So I would suggest that. I think those are the only two places. Yeah.
I've noted that.
Thank you. I think that makes it stronger. Thank you. Any other questions? There's no other questions or comments. We're looking for a motion to approve all three of the policies as modified. Mrs. Reinacek?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second?
Second? Seconded by Mrs. Kozlowski. Any other discussion? Okay, Sue, would you take the roll call vote, please?
Carrie Kozlowski?
Aye.
Karen Reinacek?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Joseph Como?
Aye.
Mark Barowski?
Aye.
Anthony Zenobia?
Aye.
Markell Moore?
Aye.
Kelly Piasik?
Aye. Passes eight-zero. Thank you. All right. Moving on to our consent agenda. Mr. Clark, I see that we have some gifts. Would you like to review those?
Yes, we do. Five gifts. School District of Waukesha Maide program received $3,500 from Husco International. Funds will be used to update, repair, or purchase new equipment for project supplies. The Waukesha South Band received four remaining gifts, $2,000 from the Elk National Veteran Service, $2,318 from the Greendale School District, $1,000 from Generac Power Systems, and $725.26 from Ripon High School.
Thank you. That's just wonderful. It's nice to hear that report every month. Thank you to all of those who have generously given to us. Your agenda includes a number of categories and items for approval. If any board member wishes to have an item set aside for separate consideration, you will have that opportunity. There were no expulsions this month. Also included in the items for approval are revisions to the following policies, which were approved at the April 19th, 2022 Policy Committee Meeting. Policy 2210, Curriculum Development. 2414, Human Growth and Development. 1460, 3160, and 4160, Physical Examination Policies. 3122.01 and 4122.01, Drug-Free Workplace Policies. And 3340 and 4340, Grievance Procedure Policies. At this time, if any board member wishes to have an item set aside for separate consideration, please indicate now. All right. Mrs. Reinacek, would you present the consent agenda for approval, please?
Yes, thank you, Mrs. President, sorry. Earlier this evening, the Human Resources and Compensation Committee approved of 20 resignations and 14 new and continuing contracts. The information was provided in your packet, and an addendum was placed on your desk. I move that the consent agenda be approved as amended.
Is there a second? Mrs. Kozlowski, thank you. Any further questions or discussion? Mr. Como?
Yeah, just real quick, I noticed we had to establish Fund 21. Due to a gift from Husco International? I'm not understanding that explanation. So if you take a look at the list of the gifts, it says Maide has established a Fund 21 account. What does that mean? Because Fund 21, it's really a school district account, not Maide's account.
Yeah. A recent accounting change, I forget what Gazzby rule it was. If you remember, we used to have student activity accounts all over the district. And what Gazzby, fill in the number, and I can send that out to anyone who wants to look up. Required us to do is, the student activity accounts had become more of a collection of funds that really weren't applicable. It really was supposed to be school, student-led groups were supposed to be captured there. So any gifts like this that we track, whether it's a grant from Kohl's or other things, we're all moved to Fund 21. It is district accounts, but it's for that specific purpose of kind of tracking these in-and-out transactions like this.
Okay.
That's a newer rule.
Okay, I was going to say, I'm not familiar with this, so. Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you for catching that. Anything else? Mr. Moore? Turn your microphone on. Thank you.
I had a question about human resources, but I'm so sorry. Whoa, I didn't know it was all the way at the edge. Sorry about that. I had a question about human resources when, remember, Reinacek spoke about the 14 resignations, but I didn't know, we used that discussion, I didn't know if that was appropriate to discuss it at that time.
You can ask your question.
Okay, so my question was, was there exit interviews done with these resignations? I mean, that's, was there, you know, and why are pretty hefty teachers leaving? And if anyone had done those exit interviews, who have done them? And who can, I mean, can we know a brief reason why teachers are resigning? I mean, one teacher only have been in the district for less than five years. So, you know, that's sad to hear that they're resigning, so.
Mrs. Thede?
So yes, I provide everyone an opportunity to give feedback when they get a resignation. And I can create a summary of reasons for those who are leaving. A lot of them are moving closer or places closer to their home. So I can provide a summary of reasons why people are resigning.
Mr. Como?
And just to put it in perspective, Mrs. Thede, is this a big year of people leaving? Regular year? I mean, can you give us a sense of how does the resignations this year compare to other years?
So I don't think I'll know exactly until next month. We're pacing, right now, we're pacing ahead of next month. But I don't know if that means I'll have fewer next month, and it'll even out compared to last year. So I'll have a better picture in June if we are much higher than we have been in the past.
Do you know what our total was last year versus what our running total is this year?
I have, I don't have it off the top of my head. But I do know between last month and this month, those numbers were about double this year compared to last year.
Okay, thank you.
So I have a question also. I'm just wondering if the reasons, do we track them at all year over year? Is it just all qualitative reasons? Do we try to quantify this at all? I'm just kind of curious of like historical reasons people are leaving and just comparison year to year.
This is my third year in the role, so I've been collecting this data last year and this year. I don't know if I collected it the pandemic years, but I would have, I would have all that information. And like I said, next month, we'll know if this is a greater year of resignations than in the past. But typically, we hire between 60, between 50 and 100 teachers annually. So if we're sitting at 40-some resignations at this point, I don't know if that's the number exactly, but it's not an alarming increase at this point. But like I said, it's a little bit premature for me to make a final conclusive answer.
Mrs. Reinacek?
Thank you. Could we add that to our HR agenda?
I will provide an update exactly next month.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, Sue, will you take the roll call vote, please?
Anthony Zenobia?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Carrie Kozlowski?
Aye.
Markell Moore?
Aye.
Mark Barowski?
Aye.
Joseph Como?
Aye.
Karen Reinacek?
Aye.
Kelly Piasik?
Aye. Passes eight-zero. Moving on to our superintendent's report.
Dr. Seabert?
All right, thank you, Dr. Piasik. Just a couple of updates for the board this evening. The first is in regards to our bringing of Whittier and Hadfield together. Just want to start by commending the principals, the office staff, and the teaching and support staff for their efforts in coming together as one body. That's going very well. And also for their collective efforts in bringing kids and families together. During the month of May, on Tuesdays after school, the staffs are meeting together for team building and planning work. They've had two of those sessions, and they've both been successful. The kids have had a number of different events. The Whittier kids have been visiting Whittier, or Hadfield, I should say. And they actually have a combined roller skating event tomorrow night, which they're looking forward to. Skate land. Staffing has been established, and professional development is being set up for the summer. We also have, with the help of the service building and Mr. Clark, a moving plan established for Whittier to get all their stuff over to Hadfield. We are working on the playground, the gym, the hallway flooring, technology, and after-school care with Park and Rec. That all is progressing and nearly complete, completely planned, I should say. And then the last thing I wanted to mention is that after two stakeholder meetings, we have resolved to keep the name of the school as Hadfield. And rather, we're going to invest time in the kids creating a new mascot for the school as a way to further bring them together. And then secondly, I wanted to highlight something that's quite special. In just a few weeks, when we hit graduation, we are going to graduate the first class of dual-language program students from the school district of Waukesha. So those of you that have been around this table for many years, dating back to 2009, will remember when that program came to be. And we tout that program significantly as we should. And it's very safe to say that that is the best dual-language program in the entire state of Wisconsin. So really pretty special to see kids having progressed through that program. And now they'll be walking across the stage, and you'll all be there to congratulate them. So that concludes my report, Dr. Piasik.
Thank you. It's really great news and really credit to the vision to create that program. Any questions or comments? Mr. Como?
I, I mean, there's so much that has gone into that program over the years, and it has really matured in a fantastic manner. The teachers, the leaders, it's been really wonderful to witness. I mean, the board may have been involved with helping moving that forward, but it's really the people, day in and day out, that are teaching and that are planning and they're leading this, that really have made this a fantastic program for, we talk about gems in this district. What a gem. And I have fond memories that go even back to Cynthia Gannon. And I remember her as a principal, and just there's a lot of good memories. And it's really cool to see this tiny little plant that was seed, or this seed that was planted and what it's grown into. It's been fantastic. A lot of people, a lot of very good people who've been committed for many years have made this happen.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Okay, thank you, Dr. Seabert. All right, next up on the agenda are our committee reports. And first up this month is the Policy Committee, which, as we spoke to earlier, is combining the policy work and some of the government relations, regulatory and statute work. That committee will be chaired by Mr. Montijo. And in his absence tonight, Dr. Cook is going to give the update.
Thank you. There were nine policies that were approved at the April 19th, 2022 Policy Committee that were approved earlier this evening via the Consent Agenda. I'll be reaching out to Mr. Montijo next week to get a first Policy Committee meeting on the calendar. More information will come on that date and time.
Thank you. And next on the agenda is the Finance and Facilities Committee update given by the new chair, Mr. Como.
Yeah, thank you, Mrs. President. Tonight, we have one action item and four discussion and information items. The action item is the approval of the 2022-2023 student fees. The committee was presented a recommendation for the student fees for the 2022-2023 school year. There are no changes in instructional fees. Final food service fees will be determined after the award of the food service contract. The committee approved the student instructional fees as presented, and I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Kozlowski. Seeing none, Sue, would you take the vote, please?
Markell Moore?
Aye.
Joseph Como?
Aye.
Anthony Zenobia?
Aye.
Karen Reinacek?
Aye.
Carrie Kozlowski?
Aye.
Mark Barowski?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Kelly Piasik?
Aye. Passes eight-zero.
Hey, moving into discussion and information items, the first one is the Lowell Park Tennis Courts Project. Brian Schley, who is the current North's Athletic Director, and Ron Groll from the Parks and Rec Department were in attendance to discuss a partnership to replace the eight tennis courts at Lowell Park, which are utilized by North's tennis teams. The estimated costs of the project are $558,000 to be split evenly between the School District of Waukesha and the city. The city would maintain maintenance responsibilities after the project is complete, and they currently do at this time. And would also, the city would also be solely responsible for installing the eight court LED lighting system. Construction would be completed in the summer, fall of 2020. Construction would be completed in the summer, fall of 2023, and this item will be agendized as an action item at our next FNF meeting for further consideration.
Any further questions or comments about that? Mr. Zenobia.
Yeah, just a couple of general questions in regards to the usage by North. Could you give some perspective perhaps on how much that's used? How big are the tennis teams? I mean, it's quite an investment, I'm just trying to get a feel for what it's being used for. And I did hear some of that in the FNF meeting, I'm just looking for a further clarification, more information about its usage by North mainly, is what I understand, but perhaps other parts of the district.
Yeah, in the F and Board Acts, under that agenda item is the permits for the fall and spring seasons, which lists every, and we get a permit from Park and Rec with all the dates and times listed, so that would give you, and it's quite extensive, so I won't try to read it through you, through it for you, but it's quite extensive. The number of athletes on the tennis teams, I can send that out in the Friday update if that's all right, I don't know the history. It's always careful to take one-year snapshots of tennis teams so we can provide you some enrollment or participation levels in the update if that, if that's all right.
Thank you.
All right, if nothing else, go ahead.
All right, moving on to the monthly budget report. Revenues and expenditures continue to be within the budgeted limits for the General and Special Education Fund. The district is operating in accordance with our approved budget in all other funds as well.
Any questions? Mr. Zenobia.
Thank you. Yes, in the report, it was brought up that part of our revenue was related to the Common School Fund that goes to our libraries, in the amount of $634,000. Is that, that seems to be up a bit from last year. I mean, I know we talked about this, and the reason I bring it up was, we discussed this more in February as it related to our discussion on libraries and content and what have you. And so, this was talked about where the money came from and where it went. Part of raising the issue was, back at that time, we still had, I believe it was over $100,000 from the previous year that we had not spent. So, I'm just trying to get a sense and a feel, for one, this may be something we could talk with, it could come back, has that other money been appropriated? And then what's the increase over last year that now we'll be looking to find a way to spend these funds?
Yeah, we can provide backup or follow-up information because in COVID, it kind of got weird with carryover and all of that, but I can report that out either in the update or at the next FNF agenda item as well. If we have it Friday, I'll send it out Friday because it'll be fresh in everyone's mind.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, thank you. The 2022-2023 budget development is our next item. We're approximately halfway through our budget calendar for the 2022-2023 school year, a cycle that starts in November with a review of preliminary budget assumptions, and it concludes in October with the approval of the final budget and tax levy by the Board of Education. The committee reviewed the next steps in the process as we move toward the budget hearing in September, and final approvals will be in the fall.
Any questions? Okay.
Right, and the final topic is the ESER funding update. The administration shared a trial balance of items that have been approved by the board. Items are marked as either approved or assigned. Approved means it was approved by the board. Assigned means it is tentatively approved by the board, but final action is still pending. The ESER report will be agendized on a monthly basis to keep the FNF Committee and Board of Education updated on the utilization of ESER funds.
Any questions about ESER funding?
Kelly, can I just add one?
Yes.
Comment that I forgot to mention at FNF. The board's been very detailed, and the reporting we're doing for the community and the board is very detailed, which is a good thing, but as we kick into this, whether it's the number of students changing and the number of books we need or other things, there might, or freight is going up from what we presented from the board. I just want the board to know that, or I'm looking for some latitude, if it's $4,000 or $5,000, you know, if things move that none of us could have known, I'm assuming that the board doesn't want me to bring back small, what I would consider small adjustments to what you specifically approved, or do you? And I'm fine either way, I just don't want to start, technically, I don't have approval to go beyond those numbers. So, I just thought maybe we talked about, I meant to do it at FNF, and I completely forgot to mention it, so.
Mrs. Kozlowski, did you want to comment?
Mr. Clark, I agree. I think what I'd like to do is, at the next FNF meeting, have a discussion on materiality. So, variance threshold, materiality, key accounts, right, high risk, low risk, and be able to build that in that gives a guidance as to what we expect to review, to have insights on if we need further questions, but I think that's a fair request.
Anything further? Okay.
All right, Mrs. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Comall. Next on the agenda is the Teaching and Learning Committee, and I've asked Mr. Zenobia to present that committee report tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Piacic. Our last Teaching and Learning Committee was held last week, May 3rd, at 6:00 here in the boardroom. We have three action items and four discussion items that appear on the agenda, the TNL agenda, rather, this evening. Our first action item is approval of the AP Chemistry Textbook. Access to the current textbooks for AP Chemistry is expiring at the end of this school year. In order to be in compliance with the College Board, we must maintain an up-to-date resource. The piloting team is recommending the adoption of the recommended text, which is AP Chemistry, Chemistry, the Central Science, 14th Edition. On a vote of 5-0, the TNL Committee approved the AP Chemistry Textbook as presented. We request board approval, and I so move.
Is there a second? Mr. Moore? Any questions? All right, Sue, would you take the roll call, please?
Karen Reinecheck.
Aye.
Markell Moore.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye.
Mark Barowski.
Aye.
Anthony Zenobia.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Carrie Kozlowski.
Aye.
Kelly Piasik.
Aye, passes eight zero.
Our second action item is the approval of the AP Physics Textbook. Again, access to current textbooks for AP Physics 1 and 2 is expiring at the end of this school year. In order to be in compliance again with the College Board, we must maintain this resource up-to-date as well. Rachel Herman, our Director of Secondary Learning, and Erica Yoss, K-12 Science and Environmental Education Coordinator, gave an overview of the results of this pilot process and recommended this text, the AP Physics, College Physics, A Strategic Approach, 4th Edition. TNL approved this vote on a vote of 5-0, and as it was presented to us, we request board approval, and I so move.
Is there a second? Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Any questions? Okay, Sue.
Joseph Como.
Aye.
Mark Barowski.
Aye.
Carrie Kozlowski.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Karen Reinecheck.
Aye.
Markell Moore.
Aye.
Anthony Zenobia.
Aye.
Kelly Piasik.
Aye, passes eight zero.
Our third action item is the approval of the Middle School Science Resource. Again, access to the current Middle School Science Resource is expiring at the end of the 21-22 school year at all of our middle schools, Butler, Horning, and Les Paul. Again, this was presented by Ms. Herman and Ms. Yoss, and they were present to answer our questions about this resource being recommended for renewal, which is iQuest. This offers support for both English and Spanish instruction, digital access to lessons, and all necessary supplies. The resource has proven to be successful in all of our middle schools with those students. Again, a vote of 5-0, the TNL Committee approved the iQuest Middle School Science Resource as presented. We request board approval, and I so move.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Comall. Any questions? Okay, Sue.
Mark Barowski.
Aye.
Anthony Zenobia.
Aye.
Markell Moore.
Aye.
Karen Reinecheck.
Aye.
Carrie Kozlowski.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye.
Kelly Piasik.
Aye, passes eight zero.
Our first discussion item this evening is on Character Strong, our high school SEL resource for teaching life and employability skills. This was the third TNL presentation regarding Character Strong this year. It was also presented to TNL in August, and again, August of 2021 and this January. It was presented by Luke Pinion, our Director of Student Services, with Maria Di Amato, Assistant Principal of South, Laura Koppel, and teachers, Sarah, I'm sorry, Laura Koppel and Sarah Dude, along with Margaret Mulqueen and our elementary counselor there, Amanda De Souza. We're also all on hand to explain lessons and activities intended to develop student skills around building community, relationships, healthy habits, resiliency, stress regulation, communication, and other essential life skills. These skills are all aligned with the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction SEL competencies. Character Strong has been piloted this school year, and the team reviewed the scope and sequence of the ninth-grade lessons.
Any questions about Character Strong? Okay, Mr. Zenobia. Give you a second.
Thank you. Our second discussion item, Elementary Writing Pilot Update, also for review in our curricular design process in the elementary writing curriculum, was presented by Alyssa Yao, Director of Elementary Learning, our literacy coaches, Emily Freeman and Jenny Restock. Along was first-grade teacher Courtney Konetska. They all shared what they would be recommending as benchmark writing, which was one of the resources that was piloted this year. Approval of this elementary writing curriculum will be on the June agenda.
Any questions? It was a four-and-a-half-hour meeting, so I think we covered a lot of it there. Go ahead, Anthony.
Our third discussion item was the High School English Textbook Recommendation, which was the English Language Arts Curriculum and Piloting Team Study Sync by McGraw-Hill for the second time at the TNL Committee. Committee is currently reviewing the curricular resource and text for English at 9th through 12th grade, and will be seeking approval in July with proposed implementation in August of 2022.
Okay, seeing no nods. Let me continue.
Our fourth and final discussion item, the key performance indicators of our MAP and risk ratios. The Winter MAP data was reviewed along with risk ratio data, which identifies the risk of students of color as compared to white students for academic and behavioral adversity. This data helps track and reduce disproportionality across our system.
Any further comments, questions, or discussion?
That includes our, concludes our TNL Committee Report, and our next meeting will be Tuesday, June 7th, at 6:00 PM here in the boardroom.
Thank you. We are holding a slot on the agenda tonight for our new Student Services Committee, which I'm excited about, gives us an opportunity really to dedicate time to focus on our student and family experience. The Student Services Committee will be chaired by Mr. McCaffrey.
Thank you, Madam President. The Student Services Committee has been created to cover a variety of topics critical to our students' learning experience. The committee will meet monthly on the third Tuesday starting in June to address topics such as counseling, psychology, social work, health services, discipline, safety, student and family engagement, student technology, student and family communication, special education, and others. Our first meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, June 21st, 2022, at 6:00 PM in the boardroom. And that concludes my report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to the Human Resources and Compensation Committee, presented by Mrs. Reinecheck.
Thank you. Approval of Recommended Candidate and the Contract for the Position of Director of Student Services. The administration is recommending Mark Lenerer for the position of Director of Student Services. Mr. Lenerer is a collaborative relational leader. He comes to Waukesha with vast teaching and administration experience. He is described as a leader who goes above and beyond for the students and staff he serves. His approachable and calm demeanor will be an asset in the role. He is data-driven, organized, and values relationships. Mr. Lenerer is currently the Assistant Principal at Germantown High School. He has served as an English teacher and the English Department Chairperson. He received his master's degree in educational leadership from Marion University and his master's of arts, English, from Purdue University. His BA in English Education is from Illinois State University. Mark's resume and contract were provided in your packet. Salary and benefits will be according to the middle management policies. Mrs. President, I move to approve the recommendation and contract of Mark Lenerer for the position of Director of Student Services.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Comall. Any questions? Okay, Sue, would you take the vote?
Mark Barowski.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Karen Reinecheck.
Aye.
Anthony Zenobia.
Aye.
Markell Moore.
Aye.
Carrie Kozlowski.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye.
Kelly Piasik.
Aye, passes eight zero.
Okay, moving on to the Approval of Recommended Candidate and the Contract for the Position of Principal of Horning Middle School. The administration is recommending Kent Kleinowski for the position of Principal of Horning Middle School. Mr. Kleinowski comes to Horning Middle School with high recommendations from East Troy, where he has been the co-principal for the past three years. As a former special ed teacher, Kent has experience working with the diverse groups of students. Kent spent several years working at West Dallas Central High School. He brings strengths and avid leadership, and has a focus on making the Horning School culture a positive place to learn and grow. The students who met him at Horning said he was serious but funny, and thought he would be a perfect fit for their school. Mr. Kleinowski is currently the co-principal at East Troy High School. He has served as an academic dean at West Dallas Central and as a special ed teacher. He received his master's degree in administration and instruction from Cardinal Strich University, and his BA in secondary education from UW-Milwaukee. Kent's resume and contract were provided in your packet. Salary and benefits will be according to the middle management policies. Mrs. President, I move to approve the recommendation and contract of Kent Kleinowski for the position of Principal of Horning Middle School.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. McCaffrey. Mr. Moore?
I'm just going to say this, and then, it's for the other contracts going forward too, starting at the principal level. I am all for supporting the principals, but I want to say that as I come into this role, I'm looking forward to accountability on administration level. We are paying our principals a hefty wind in most districts, and so I want to, you know, welcome them, but just know that I am going to want some relationship one-on-one exactly to make sure that teachers are satisfied in the building, are felt supported, other staff members are feeling supported, and as they come into this district, that's a huge responsibility running the school, I know as a teacher. So, I am looking forward to that, but I want to make sure that I preface that, you know, that accountability piece. So, does that make sense?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Moore. Okay.
Carrie Kozlowski.
Aye.
Karen Reinecheck.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye.
Mark Barowski.
Aye.
Anthony Zenobia.
Aye.
Markell Moore.
Aye.
Kelly Piasik.
Aye, passes eight zero.
And last we have, no, not last, second to last, Approval of Recommended Candidate and the Contract for the Position of Principal of Butler Middle School. The administration is recommending Laura Gennaro for the position of Principal of Butler Middle School. Ms. Gennaro is a servant leader who believes in being visible and collaborating with teachers, students, and parents for the best possible outcomes for students. She has high expectations, is a continuous learner, and brings a symptoms approach, a systems approach to any large project. She has passion for middle school and is excited to be Butler's next principal. project. She has passion for middle school and is excited to be Butler's next principal. Laura Gennaro is currently the Assistant Principal at West Bend High School. Prior experience includes Director of Teacher Development, Curriculum, Instruction, and Assessment at Christian Education Leadership Academy, Principal of Whittnall Middle School, Principal of Milton Middle School, and Associate Principal of New Berlin West Middle and High School. Additionally, she has been a reading and science teacher. Ms. Gennaro received her master's in educational administration and her MS in education from Concordia University and her BS in elementary education from Carroll University. Laura's resume and contract were provided on your desk this evening. Salary and benefits will be according to the middle management policies. Mrs. President, I move to approve the recommendation and contract of Laura Gennaro as the Principal of Butler Middle School.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Zanobia. All right, any questions? Further discussion? Okay, Sue, would you take the vote?
Anthony Zanobia.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Carrie Kozlowski.
Aye.
Markell Moore.
Aye.
Mark Barowski.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye.
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Kelly Piasik.
Aye. Passes eight zero.
And our last action item is the Approval of Recommended Candidate and the Contract for the Position of Assistant Principal and Athletic Director of North High School. And we are going to be moving this recommendation to next month's meeting. Discussion items? There were no items for discussion this evening. Mrs. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Reinacek. All right, that concludes our committee reports for tonight. So we're now moving on to other business. Are there any recommendations for future board or committee action or discussion items? I know we took note of one for FNF. Is there anything else? All right, seeing none. We do have a need for a closed session tonight. In fact, I think we require items C, D, and E for closed session. So I would be looking for someone to make a rather lengthy motion. Any volunteers? You just need to read C, D, and E. Mrs. Kozlowski.
Thank you for volunteering.
Yeah, without glasses. The motion to adjourn to executive session pursuant to Wisconsin Statutes 19.851E for deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever the competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Student transportation and food service provider contract, potential sale of district property. Item D, to adjourn to executive session per Wisconsin Statutes 19.851C, to consider employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the government body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. Item E, to adjourn to executive session per Wisconsin Statutes 19.851F, to consider financial, medical, social, or personal histories or disciplinary data of specific persons, preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems, or the investigation of charges against specific persons which, if discussed in public, would be likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data or involved in such problems or investigations, specifically to consider a complaint filed against a district employee under School Board Policy 9130.
Thank you. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Zanobia. Mr. Como?
Just real quick, I do have a conflict of interest for one aspect of item C, so I will be abstaining from the vote overall, but I would be able to be in closed session for some of the things.
Okay. We also have some board members who will be recusing themselves from item one E, item E, I'm sorry.
E.
E. So I think we're taking that last. Okay, okay. So we'll need to roll call to adjourn to executive session.
All right, Markell Moore.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Abstain.
Anthony Zanobia.
Aye.
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Carrie Kozlowski.
Aye.
Mark Barowski.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Kelly Piasik.
Aye. Passes seven zero one. And with that, our regular open session is adjourned.